Oh, that's good. All right.
Yeah, there you go.
All right.
On with the real business.
Yeah. Okay. That was good. Our, I'm sorry, let me think here. Item five, RSI disbursements and bills for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four through March twenty-six, authorized payments. I'll have Mrs. Pogankord take over the meeting.
You want to do audience first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any public comments? I'm sorry. April full took.
We only got two, got ahead of you.
Yeah. Maya, you got anything else?
We're ready now.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Phil.
You're welcome.
All right, so item five, disbursements for RSI, I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSI Petroleum, and Mrs. Pogankord will take over the meeting.
Okay, do I have any comments from the peanut gallery or the audience? Here we go. Counsel? Have a motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
I'll second it.
Councilmember John?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogankord.
Yes.
Three zero vote with a recusal for Mayor Davies.
Okay. How are you doing, sir?
I'm good.
Item six, approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four mid-year budget adjustments as presented.
Thank you, Mayor Davies, council members. The item before you, item before you are the mid-year budget adjustments for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. On the staff report, first page there, you will see a summary by fund of the fund balance increases. So you can see that there are either increases or decreases in revenue, increases or decreases in expenditures, and then any net change to fund balance, as well as the fund balance numbers for the original budget compared now to the amended budget after the adjustments. On the next pages, we go into more detail, looking at the variance and trying to offer explanations for what these increases or decreases were. I won't go through every single line item, but I'll try to focus on some of the larger items. So, beginning with general fund, we did see some increases to revenues. Sales tax, most of that is coming from the new Measure S revenue. So we were conservative when we budgeted the revenue for that. Based on the three quarters we've received so far, the numbers are coming in higher than what we had anticipated. So we continue to still budget it conservatively, but we did raise those budget estimates there, so. You'll see development services revenue has an increase in revenue of about two hundred seventy-five thousand just from increased building activity so far this year. Service and admin charges of two hundred thirty thousand, this is relating to our successor agency admin costs that we, that the city collects. We each year budget that conservatively because we're not sure if the state is going to approve that. They did approve it, and so we're just adjusting the revenue up for that. Interest income, we increased about a hundred thousand, so interest rates have stayed high, and so we continue to take advantage with our active investing, and so we're earning a little bit more interest income than what we had anticipated, so that's good news. And then if I shift over to the expenditure side, some of the more noteworthy line items, you'll see under computer supplies, one hundred twenty-seven thousand for citywide camera replacements. In our original budget, five-year budget, we had spaced that out through a few different, you know, over the span of several fiscal years. We decided to go ahead and do that all at once for cost savings and take advantage of the surplus funds that we have in this year's budget. Under contract service, you'll see the sales tax prep agreement. So if you recall, when we went the Measure S adoption route last year, we had to enter into agreements with the CD TFA, that's the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. They, the prep agreement, they had said could be a fee of up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and that was just for them creating the Measure S, the transaction tax account and all of the communication with businesses. So we budgeted that last year, we have not received an invoice yet, and so we just carried forward the budget into our current fiscal year because we're anticipating still receiving that invoice at some point. Police equipment, an increase of about four hundred fifty-six thousand. I believe at the last council meeting, you approved some purchase of police vehicles. Most of these had been budgeted in prior year budgets, but we were not able to make the purchases due to availability, so we're just again carrying forward that budget into the mid-year. The Valley Recreation Park, two hundred forty-one thousand interest. Again, we had some cost overages above what the grant amount was providing, and so the general fund was picking up that difference. And then finally, on general fund, we had the EF and Polygrind Overlay Project, and again, that was just some cost overages just being picked up by general fund. So I'll move on to gas tax, streets and roads, it's also SB one funding. Again, this was, you'll see, it's a decrease overall of eight hundred twenty-seven thousand fund balance. Much of that is, is again due to timing. We had some large street projects that originally we had slated to finish last fiscal year. Some of those costs continued into the current fiscal year, so we're just carrying forward the budget. On all the capital projects, we pretty much put the reason for any adjustments, timing related. Some of those are projects that were completed prior years, but we received the grant funding in the current year, so you have some increase in revenues there. And then some of the other line items are expenditures, again, just timing related. Moving on to the water fund, the main, we had a decrease in fund balance of four hundred thousand, mostly related to some water rights purchases that were done. And then with sewer fund, on the revenue side, our sewer use fees did increase. Each year, we increase based on the CPI factor, and so last year's adjustment was six percent, and so we're seeing that revenue increase now. And then, on the expenditure side, you'll see a negative four hundred seventy-five thousand. That was a couple large capital projects that were originally budgeted this year. We are delaying those into the next fiscal year. Continuing on to the refuse fund, there's an increase of seventy-five thousand in revenue. That was related to grant, grant received from the state for the SB thirteen eighty-three compliance. And then we had, that's offset by some increased expenditures related to the rate study that was just completed for refuse. For the transit fund, we had an increase in one of the revenues, our FTA revenue, and that increase was in last fiscal year as well as this year. And because of that, we have a decreased funding in our Article Four funding, so we're basically using the fund balance that we had on hand last year and then not having to claim as much in the current year. For the solid waste management fund, that is the legal dumping funds that we received, we receive annually from the county now, it's a relatively new fund that we just created last year to track. And so our allocation that we received from Kern County was slightly up, and then we are allocating a little bit more to our staff time to spend that money. And then finally, the airport fund, you'll see that there's a large decrease in revenue of about two hundred seven thousand, but really that's just a transfer in that comes from the general fund. Less is being required this fiscal year because we received some grant money last year, and so we had some fund balance on hand, and now that fund balance is being used rather than transferring it from the general fund. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a few questions. First of all, thank you for giving the media adjustment in a timely manner. So, you know, I was on your shoes, so I know how it goes. In general fund, for the CD TFA, the sales tax agreement, I believe that is a one-time, one-time contract? Do they charge us annual contract from now on?
So the CTFA does charge an admin fee.
Right.
And just like our regular Bradley Burns tax, and that will just come out of our, you know, the net collections, and that's a smaller amount. This is supposed to just be a one-time fee for them creating the account and sending letters to all the business owners and getting everything created. It's supposed to be up to a hundred seventy-five thousand. I'm hopeful that it's going to be much less than that, but we just went conservative and then pushed in the full amount.
I was very happy to see the Measure S being passed because I know the city fund could have been very in jeopardy if we didn't have this, so I'm so glad to see that. Another thing is, I think that's all from the budget, thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any comments from the audience on our budget?
Just, thanks for the nice concise presentation. It fits in with everything if you go to the budget.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion then to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember John?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogankord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Assistant Manager reports.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Davies and council members. Tonight I have for you an advertising policy for city-owned facilities and special events. As we near completion of a few new recreational facilities, the pickleball courts and the police department parking lot, the Valley Park five-aside. These facilities and some others we already have will offer advertising and promotion that'll assist in the funding and ongoing maintenance of these facilities once they're operational. And we continue to also expand our special event offerings, Farmer's Market, All-American Fourth of July, Hometown Christmas, and more. And so these events also offer opportunities for businesses to sponsor, and the funds used for operational costs of those events as well. And we've had for a long time the billboards at the northern edge of the Tatchby Municipal Airport. They're released regularly to local businesses to seek the eyes of those traveling east and westbound on fifty-eight. So as we kind of expand those offerings, we thought it'd be prudent to draft an advertising policy and ensure that advertisers for events, facilities, billboards, kind of meet specific guidelines and understand the prioritization of advertising of those, of our assets here in the city. So attached in the staff report is our advertising policy. Some of the highlights, it includes several recognitions, guidelines, explanation of which businesses will be considered, and those will be prohibited for advertising based on the nature of their business, especially with the Valley Park five-aside. Want to make sure that the advertising panels, it's like twenty-two total inside. Kind of, it's going to look with advertisements on it, kind of like a hockey arena does, a rink does on the boards. We want to make sure that those were family-friendly, they weren't targeting adults, weren't pitching alcohol, drugs, whatever it might be, political candidates, that sort of thing. So we really try to make sure those, those stay appropriate. And then some of those same guidelines also transfer over to the airport billboards and special events as well. Certain things, obviously, special events, some of the billboards, billboards might be able to advertise local breweries. Special events may have a presenting sponsor, it's a winery, that sort of thing. Depending on the nature of the event, those, those will be considered, and that's listed in the policy as well. It also authorizes the city manager or designee to kind of have the final say on approvals and removals of advertising for violations of the policy. We're looking to kind of keep, everything's pretty much annual. The five-aside soccer boards will be an annual contract, so we don't have to continue to be tearing things down and putting back up new decal stickers every year, I'm sorry, every month or so. The billboards, for the most part, in the airport are annual, some go month to month after that initial annual term, and then special events are one-time. We don't plan on any advertising for the pickleball courts just because of their location being really an ice side of residential neighborhood. You know, we didn't want to put a bunch of advertisements up and that sort of thing and sort of upset the, the appeal of the neighborhoods. But every once in a while, we might have a tournament or something, and there'll be some advertisement up from a sponsor for the duration of the event, so that's listed in the policy as well. We're also prioritizing, especially with the five-aside boards, the businesses inside the city first. We're certainly open to greater Tatchby businesses. We want to give some of the businesses inside the city first crack at those advertisement opportunities, and then we could open it up as space is available to businesses in greater Tatchby or those that have clients in Tatchby might be located in a surrounding community. So that's sort of the overview of the policy. And other than that, my recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution establishing the attached city of Tatchby advertising policy for city assets and authorize the mayor to sign. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the public on this? See you then, counsel.
Corey, where are they going to be on the five-aside?
On the inside. So they won't be on the outside, they'll be on the inside of the arena, so some will face, yeah, some will face, and there's different pricing points we're going to establish as well because certain ones like By the Goals are going to have a little more visibility, photos, that sort of thing. Those on the northern side of the arena, because there are some, some fan facilities in the south side, so thinking people will be sitting there looking, so it's going to cost a little more, and then the ones on the south side will be a little less expensive. So that's kind of the thought process there, but they will be inside, like I said, just kind of think like a hockey arena does. That's how it'll be, all the advertising will be the inside.
Yeah, because I was wondering, because when I go by, it keeps getting bigger.
Yeah, so.
Where are you going to put those?
Yeah, so they'll be on the inside, and they're just going to be a decal that'll go over the existing boards, and they'll be easily replaced, but we'd like to do it annually instead of doing it every few months, and then that money just go back into public works for maintenance of the facility.
Right, so this is not only allows advertising for local businesses, but also revenue source to help maintain these facilities. As you know, the billboard revenue on the airport, or seven fifty-eight corridor, that goes into the airport investment fund. The money that we, the revenue that we would collect for the Valley Park, for instance, would go into Don Marsh's budget for maintenance of the Valley Park. Similar to Mechanics Bank Arena in Bakersfield, right, the hockey rink. The city of Bakersfield owns Mechanics Arena, and so all of those revenues go back into the upkeep of that facility.
And we can sell those out specifically, it would be upwards of twenty-five thousand a year for that facility, so.
What are the signs made of?
So the walls are, yeah, it's actually like a three M decal, and it'll be printed, and just, it'll, just, it's a big sticker, basically. So should it be, need to be replaced, it gets damaged, you know, I hate to say vandalized, but vandalized, they can be easily replaced. It's not actually, so the sign, the, the boards are already up, they're just covered right now, but then these decals will go right over the top of the, the plastic material that's behind it.
Oh, so it's a plastic material?
It's a very hard, sturdy, three M plastic material.
Like a Lex, like a Lex sand or something?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what we had at the hockey rink.
Very similar.
On that, we did the advertising in hockey rink, we raised a lot of revenue.
Yeah.
I know exactly what this is for.
So hopefully, we can get that revenue into the, the budget. We wanted to certainly have sort of a set of guidelines for all of our stuff, advertising-wise, and pulled some of this from other communities in the state, and done similar, similar things with the policies.
Also, since we've had vandalism at some of the parks, are we going to have cameras on site?
Chief, you want to speak to that?
So the answer's yes, but in Margate, we don't give a lot of our tricks.
For a valid park.
But certainly, yes.
Are we going to have cameras?
Yes, we are going to have cameras available, and they will be up in the dispatch center.
So are those, were they like motion activated or just dispatch will be monitored?
That's their constant, their constant cameras.
If there is vandalism, we can go back, it's recorded. Vandalism that happened at West Park and Central Park, as you know, those are owned by TV or any type of Valley Recreation Parks. Those are their cameras, our cameras are just.
So they have cameras at Central Park now?
Yes.
I notice there's graffiti back on the west wall of the Scout Club as of yesterday.
I think it's a good idea to have a policy, policy, because, you know, not only for the accepting the advertisement, but we can restrict the certain advertisement that is not ideal for the city to, you know, to have it on the city's board. So it'll be, it's easier or it's more practical to say no to certain advertisement because it doesn't, city doesn't, you know, allow, so it's a, it's a good idea.
We've also included two, some, some prohibitions on people like using our logo, anything that would suggest that we're endorsing their business, right, so our logo, that sort of thing, to prohibit that suggestion that it's endorsed by the city or a staff member, department head, whatever. So we put that in there as well, just to keep the, the lines clear.
And I suppose if somebody wanted to rent a space at the five-aside just as a donation, you know?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that's something that would be, would be, you know, potentially a donation.
Yeah, John and Mary Doe, if you will.
Yeah. Family, that sort of thing.
No other questions from council?
No.
We need a motion to adopt a resolution adopting a facility and event advertising policy and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember John?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogankord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
Great, thank you. City manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor Davies. I'm going to call on a couple of my department heads this evening to give us a more in-depth report, but I'd like to call on chief first to talk about our new records clerk and our new police officer. Share a little information with us on that.
So as everyone recalls, last council meeting, we did the city swearing-in of Christian Laverne, and he formally graduated from the Kern County Sheriff's Office Academy last Friday, and it was attended by friends and family, it went really well, and he's on our field training program and two weeks in, doing really well. And with that, we hired a brand-new records clerk last week. She started, her name's Nicole Turpin. Now, we're really excited about having her onboard. She is experienced, she comes to us from the prison and where she worked in the records unit out there for a number of years. She was at Cal City, Cal City closed, transferred over here to this facility here, and she desired to work for the city of Tatchby, and we snapped her up, so she's going to do a real good job for us. She's been in training for the last week. So currently, currently in the process of hiring a couple more folks, a couple of dispatchers, and our code enforcement officer, and moving right along with getting staffing up and getting people out there serving.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. I'd like to ask Mr. Costello to come back up to the podium. Corey and Carrie Anne, dispatch, are running in the Bakersfield Marathon, which is a fundraiser for the Tatchby Police Department, Tatchby Police Foundation, so maybe talk about that a little. This Sunday, right?
Yeah, this Sunday, we have, there's three of us, actually four total, running the full marathon. Myself, Carrie Anne, and that's another additional dispatcher as well, that's going to be running the full distance. My cousin as well, his wife's a dispatcher in Fountain Valley PD, and he's coming up and running, so he's been raising a few dollars for us down south as well, so I threw him on the team too. So there's four of us suckers running the full marathon, and we've got a couple, two or three in the half marathon distance and a handful in the six K distance as well. So we've been taking donations through, for the Tatchby Police Foundation, that'll go to some youth programming, and so I would lie if I'm saying I'm looking forward to it, because I certainly am not. But having done this four previous times, it, it's very painful for about ten seconds of reward at the end. So, yeah, we're going to do that, and Carrie Anne, and then we'll finish way before me, that's for sure. But it'll be a good fundraiser and good notoriety. We've got Tatchby Police Foundation jerseys we'll be wearing as well on the course, so it will be identifiable through the different distances, and it starts at, full marathon starts at seven AM Sunday morning from Stramler Park in Bakersfield, and we use twenty-six point two miles through Bakersfield, so.
Can you still donate?
Yeah, you can still donate, our website right now at liveatatchby.com, that banner ad is there. It's a simple donation through Square, and so folks can donate that, trying to kind of get into the least four figures before the start of the marathon, so that'd be awesome. I know Maya's doing some promotion with Channel Twenty-nine tomorrow as well, so, yeah, so hopefully we can get some, get some starter cash up for some youth activities at the Police Foundation, so.
Thank you, Corey.
And suffer in the process.
Thank you, Corey.
Should I sign you up? I'll sponsor you. And I'd like to ask Mr. Costello to come to the podium for a couple of different things. First Friday, this Friday, of course, Bingo Up the American Legion, walking groups on Thursday.
Bingo with American Legion, walking groups on Thursday, and then household um hazardous waste Saturday, Sunday. So, take it away, Mr. Budge.
Well, it's April and uh we're off and running. This is where busy gets started, meets uh Tahatchee, so get ready. Uh, first Friday, as a tradition, the first Friday of every month, uh, Gallery and Gifts, TVAA, the Tahatchee Valley Arts Association. They uh feature and recognize one artist from their group and uh they will be doing that starting at five o'clock at uh their facility at the corner of Tahatchee Boulevard and Green Street. Also, Friday night, the first Friday of every month, we don't talk about it much, but the American Legion Hall has bingo. So, if you're interested in that, they have bingo, sometimes they do the spaghetti dinner, and they just have a hoop there at the uh Legion Hall at uh, on F Street, right next to our our annex. So, they invite the public to come out and join them. Our walking groups, we've got two weeks in, we've been having a great time, some great conversations. Uh, the first week, we were booming, we had about forty people in attendance. Uh, we had city staff, we had TBR PD and just a ton of community members. And it was a different audience than what we see at Coffee with the Mayor, a different audience from what we see at Coffee with the Cop. And it was just a great opportunity for uh the community to get a chance to connect with us uh and ask questions. And I think uh Greg had mentioned, he had several good conversations while out there in that first event.
Yeah, during the walk, I actually had four different conversations with individuals that don't come to Coffee with the Mayor, don't come to city council meetings, but had questions and concerns about the good things. So, we were able to walk and talk about the the different elements and what we're doing at the city. So, it was great.
And then the uh second week, last week, uh with the spring break and it was a little chilly, it started to drizzle as we got started. I go, my goodness, I don't know if anyone's gonna show up, but we still had about twenty people uh in attendance and there was some of the same faces, some new faces. We've had kids, moms with uh infants and strollers. It's just been a really nice mix of the community that has turned out. So, we'll do that every Thursday. Uh, eleven AM right now, as it warms up, we'll start to do a little bit earlier, but we invite you to join us at Centennial Plaza on Green Street, eleven AM. We have a nice little warm-up and stretching activity before we start this two-mile walk. We head out into the community and uh just get a chance to visit with our residents. And then uh the household hazardous waste, we're the only community that gets two days. So, Friday and Saturday and uh Kern County Public Works has given us the first Friday and Saturday of most every month and from nine AM to one PM for household hazardous waste drop-off at the Tahatchee landfill. So, just kind of put it, you can pretty much put it on your calendars, the first Friday and Saturday of each month. But because our turnout here, because we promote it for them, help get it out, because people show up, they gave us that second day. So, to continue to make it available to the community. So, that's uh, and we'll let that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Actually thought of two additional things. Jay, if you could come to the podium. Um, I'm told that our fencing project on Tahatchee Boulevard will be starting in the next week or two. So, this is the fencing between bike paths and railroad tracks. So, hopefully sooner than later, weather-dependent, of course.
Yeah, that's uh, that's what we're chann, we're running into this cycle we get every once in a while in spring where it's like rain every seven to ten days, which makes it really hard to start any work. Uh, but, yeah, this week is supposed to be the start of the fencing project. So, a reminder, that's from, I think you just said it, Hayes to Stuber um along the north side of the bike path there, uh separating the bike path from the railroad. So, that should help make it safer and and I think it's gonna look a lot nicer uh when it's done as well. Um, and then we also, if you would you like me to give a couple other updates, we're also busy uh reworking sidewalks on Brentwood. That project you all awarded, the contractor was very eager to get started, so we fast-tracked the contracts and he's already uh demolished a number of the corners and uh this week is scheduled to do a major pourback and begin to reconstruct the facilities we're doing there. Um, and we also received bids on another sidewalk project uh north of the railroad tracks, the northside sidewalks, phase three. Not ready to bring that to you yet, but probably at the next uh council meeting, we'll be ready to award that as well. So, we're getting and then we've got a couple of major paving projects that we're hoping in the next three council meetings, somewhere in the next two months, to have those in front of you too. So, we are, to Key's point, it's it's busy time now. So, we're getting going.
Thank you. And then Dawn, um, could you come up, this was not even planned, but now the run of all meetings.
Better fill up an hour.
The uh, your Public Works Department, um, they're everywhere.
Yeah.
And uh recently, they have been improving our our Friends facility at the American Legion. So, we poured concrete last year out front, put in a nice bench that Key facilitated, but we're pouring more concrete, ripping out, you know, the old structure, putting in new concrete, and that's going along nicely.
Yeah, we did a little bit of demo there, um, uh, on the entrance to the to the facility and then taking out some some of the grass and putting it in concrete and uh, I believe we were putting in another bench there, right? Yeah, another bench for them there. So, that'll kind of spruce up that area and reduce their maintenance costs. That was one thing they they had trouble keeping the the lawn taken care of and they were paying somebody to do it and so.
Where was this now?
At the American Legion building, next, right next to the annex.
It's really, really nice and clean and just, it's very, I don't want to use the word simple, but it's 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 perfectly done. Like very, it's very clean and.
It's gonna be another rec, one of those benches recycled from the wood?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I asked their management for a list. I've been on them for a year or so. Give me a list, you know, this building's been falling apart right in front of our eyes and I got the list a week or so ago, it's a big list. Somebody may be coming to you, authorization to, you know, actually invest some city funds into that facility to help our friends at the American Legion, because someone paid an ultimate sacrifice. So, it's, it's the least we can do. But um pour the concrete is is a, is a lot of bang for the buck. It's love hanging for something we can do. And we have a great crew.
Yeah.
Um, pours concrete.
Yes.
And that's.
Great concrete crew, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
That's all that I have, which is, you know, through all of these, so and other than, you know, it's a pleasure to serve the City of Tahatchee on behalf of all of the men and women of the city. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody who's participating, all the staff. Thank you for all your work that you do. It uh shows pride in this town and everybody, what's going on in the town. So, council member reports. Hannah, did you have anything?
I just wanna make a little comment about Cory's running. I have witnessed him studying in the beginning. I said, are you sure you're gonna run twenty-six miles? He said, I'm trying. And I do know how much effort and his pain and his injury and I, and all, he does all of this for, for a good cause. So, you know, thank you, Cory.
A bill for comfort, not for speed.
Still, I, you know, that's such a big accomplishment to be able to run, you know, from the scratch, that because you are not runner and so I have witnessed how you did it. So, thank you.
I'm glad it's, you would not make Cory.
I know that's what I said.
Would like my knees and hips to last a little bit longer. Anyway, um, just lots happening in the area, you know, the pickleball courts, we have the five-on-five soccer. I I keep looking at it every day, I'll probably run off the road one of these days looking. It keeps getting taller and taller and taller. So, one of these days, I'm gonna stop and peek. And then I'm looking forward to seeing all the improvements when uh the weather turns hopefully nice for a while. If not, well then we'll have to detain it again and then try again. You know, that's a good old Tahatchee. So, yeah, pavement, potholes, you know, the whole nine yards. It'll be exciting to see that repavement of roads and whatnot. So, I look forward to it.
Mr. Smith?
When uh you ever travel to the cemetery on the west side, that road's really rough. Is it in queue for a little bit of TLC?
What's?
Talking about Burnett?
To the west side.
Public hours.
Public, but public work. And you have a service out there and it's a rough road.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
It's tough to deal with because it's asphalt over native mostly. And so, you chase it, you're right, we do chase it. We are working with FEMA a bit, um, very painful, very painful. Um, because of the hurricane that moved through in August, there was some damage to some of the facilities there, the fencing and different things. We may be reimbursed for some of that, so we can put some money into that. But we're looking, and Dawn is working looking towards a a bigger, better. In the meantime, it's bad ends until we can find the budget to do that. We're focusing on, you know, the main, main streets, Mercury's, Dawn's put together the matrix that we've been adhering to and it's working out really well.
Yes.
Uh, preserving pa, uh pavement and then with our budget also, you know, just bringing everything together. We have, I think I mentioned to Mr. Smith, the um we we actually put down more grindings in alleys on the north side, essentially. So, we're really excited, yeah, did you go look? Yeah. And so, that's working out well. So.
Like, especially the one that was done, like the streets though. That one's really good.
That was probably the best.
Yes.
Of all roads. But we have a plan, we're sticking to it and for the meantime, short-term, it's pothole filling.
At one time, there was consideration of having an entrance to that west side cemetery coming off from the, from the west. Is that still a consideration? It had to do with the land and everything in that area.
It is cer, it's it's in some plans that we've seen. Uh, Mr. Broom, John Broom, Jr. and his sister Patricia, you know, they donated the Broom Ranch. Um, and they have, they retained that intersection to a, to Tucker and Fifty-Eight. It's been listed for sale. It is commercial property. There are no facilities there, you know, no curb gutters, sidewalk, electricity waters, sewer, those sorts of things. But at some point, somebody would, I think, want to develop that area. Once that is started the process, then Jay would be working for pushing that road through, because it makes sense for the circulation.
Okay.
But that's some time out. That's an expensive piece of property to develop.
Keeping it in our minds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank, I already did a little bit, but thank the staff for everything that you guys are doing. And Cory, I'd like to uh give you my condolences for your uh efforts. I hope you, you know, uh, I do basketball, I do five miles on a Saturday, but I do it in spurts, I don't do it consistently. So, so I know, I feel your pain. Uh, but no, it's a great endeavor what you're you're doing and uh good, wish you good luck on that. Also, uh I'm sorry I missed last uh city council meeting. I tried to be an eighteen-year-old, we played basketball, where I shouldn't have been out there. I was roughing and then these eighteen-year-olds challenged me to play and I shouldn't have been out there, but I did. And I I took a tumble and broke a rib, so never broke a bone, I'm sixty-four years old and, so I'll never do that again. So, but uh, but I look good, even on video, when I fell, it, it looked good. So, but no, I appreciate uh everybody and uh thankful for what we have accomplished in this city and how beautiful our town looks and the things that we're got going. Uh, do we have a date when the Valley Park's gonna have the grand opening?
No.
No?
Okay. The reason I say that is if I give you a date right now, you're gonna hold me to it.
Yeah.
It's June.
June.
Ish.
June-ish.
It's gonna open as quickly as possible. The the contractor's actually making very great progress and the quality is is very high. We do have some you know, some um, Clean California, the agency that granted the money to the city, had requirements for certain milestones. And so, the target has always been June one and remains June one. But I know Key and Maya, Andrew, they're working on some really great am I right with the June one or no?
It's very definitely, because money has to be spent.
Well, we're spending it in a rapid rate.
I understand it very quickly.
No.
We'll, we'll get there. It's gonna be, it'll be in spring. About this year, yeah.
So, we're putting together great operation, uh ribbon cutting and that's really neat activities.
Yeah, it looks good. Really does. Beautiful sign out front and everything.
And if any of you would like to go and take a quick tour, the construction, let me know.
Okay. Let it get a little better and be, be nice.
These are just arranged out again this week. Anyway, just let me know.
Okay.
Okay.
Chief, uh, appreciate all your hard work on trying to catch these criminals on the graffiti. I know we can't discuss it right now, but you know, we need to do something about that. It's just terrible what they're doing. I'm just tired of it. You see it everywhere. I don't want this to happen. I've been to our town, we need to just, Kurt, we need to nip it right now. We need to make an example of these, where we catch, like the you know, the front page of the paper and have, invite every news channel up here. We gotta do something about that. It's just terrible, all the damage that are doing. Uh, I noticed the mural right there on Tahatchee Boulevard on Robinson, is a big chunk of it fell off.
Yes, the murals uh originally, most of the downtown murals were all facilitated by Main Street Tahatchee. And as you're aware, Main Street Tahatchee has been dissolved. And so, the murals have not been maintained. There was money, about nineteen thousand dollars, if I recall, that was moved over in a mural maintenance fund that was transferred over to the Heritage League. The Heritage League is the keeper of those funds for now. But Councilmember Power, she's not here this evening, unfortunately, she has, um, we have discussed this in great detail and she has volunteered to take out this effort. So, she's been working with the Tourism Commission, with the um ex chairman, Charles White, of the Murals Committee, uh Lynn Bennett, of the uh painters. And they're going to uh be looking at all the, well, they've already, and they're assessing the murals now. So, they're gonna look at bringing them back up to speed. Some of them need just a little touch-up, maybe a clear coat. Others, like the one on Boulevard there, uh Bob Mitchell's building, where the nail salon is located, a big chunk of that came off. They had to plaster on this. And these murals are twenty years old. And so, um, they're looking at um doing some fundraising and then replacing all the murals or, you know, maintaining all the murals over the next couple of years. It's a constant. It's like a perpetual motion. It's just you have to constantly, when you're done, the next one you have to come back. But you want the murals to be nice. And they all, they're beautiful.
Right.
So, Jeanette Power is working on that. She's she's heading that up. So, thank you to Jeanette and I'm sure she'd be happy to give you a report next council meeting.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Gare. Uh, with that, uh, we will adjourn and we're gonna go into closed session. And if we have anything to report, uh, we'll come back and report it.
Yes.
Thank you.